The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Welcome to the June 8th meeting of the Westford Select Board. We are going to start off, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance today led by Anita.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the United States of America.
America.
To their representative states and their nations.
Under God. Under God.
And the invisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all. Welcome, everyone. A couple of housekeeping things before we start. If you've joined us before, we are going to work hard to answer any questions that you have, and we will be watching to see if your hands go up. We do a little bit better job, though, if you've got questions for us, if you answered in the questions, even if your question is just, "I would like to speak." So if that could be your first stop in getting our attention, that would be great. But we'll make best effort to keep our eyes everywhere. Probably tonight, the first thing we should do is just re-invite everybody to town meeting, which is coming up. Maybe, Jody, you could just remind everyone of the details? And is the weather outlook good, Jody?
Last I saw, it was. I think it's supposed to be in the 70s, which will be a little more comfortable, cloudy. We're asking people to arrive at 8:30 at the WA Field so they can get checked in and seated. The meeting will start promptly at 9:00, and the moderator is planning to break at noon. We will have, I think, four food trucks, so there will be some lunch available for those that would like to partake. No masks are required, and everything else is pretty much like the last couple of town meetings. So we're looking forward to seeing everyone.
It'll be great to see everybody at the most complete and authentic form of democracy left in our union. Also wanted to congratulate the graduating seniors from Westford Academy. Glad that they had a nice day and hope they and their families are doing well, and best wishes and best of luck to them as they move on to what's next. Any other comments or questions for the board before we move on to our next item?
Not for me.
So, Anita?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that it looks like there's going to be child care at annual town meeting. I can add the link into the chat for everyone for the details for how to register.
Great. Thanks, Anita. Traveling around town this weekend, I thought the flowers looked really beautiful, so thank you to everyone who's planting those beautiful flowers. Next up on our agenda is a public hearing for a request for transfer of a Massachusetts general law alcohol beverages restaurant license. I believe that we need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. I'll second.
Great. All in favor, and we'll do roll call vote as we always do. Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous. Patty, is there anything we should take special note of regarding this license?
Hi there. No, everything is in order. This is a transfer from this restaurant down closer to Kimball's on that end of 110. They have found someone to go in there, and that looks like it'll be pretty good, and all their things are in order.
Okay, great. It looks like the applicant is there. Eric, I don't know if it's possible to unmute May Chen if she or he has anything to add. Any questions from the board while we're checking with the applicant? Anita?
Yeah, someone had brought to my attention that the operating hours for the liquor license goes until 2:00 a.m., but I didn't know if there were other restaurants that also serve alcohol until 2:00. Is there, are there any concerns there, or where?
Maybe that's a Patty question, or Jody.
I can answer that, or Jody can answer that. You want me to? Okay. All of the liquor licenses have hours from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and that's alcoholic beverage commission hours. The local licensing authorities can make them different if they like, but that's when they're allowed to use their license for the sale of alcohol. Most places, especially restaurants, are closed well before then. I believe sometimes the clubs, when they have a function going on, a wedding or something, they may use it till 2:00, but it's not typically done.
Okay. May Chen, it looks like you're unmuted, if you have anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Oh, okay, good. Sorry. Technology issue. Yes. So, yes, I'm here for the Fuji Restaurant in Westford's liquor license transfer from the previous owner. I mean, what would you like to know about?
Ordinarily, we just would welcome you and see if the board has any questions for you. We've already heard from Patty, a town clerk that tells us everything's in order. Any questions from the board? Other questions? Anita had a good question. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Okay. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, in a second. Okay, great. Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we pass unanimously. Thank you very much for investing in Westford, and congratulations in your new role.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are already welcoming our esteemed Senator. Senator Kennedy, welcome.
Do we need to make a motion to close the public hearing?
We do. Thank you, John. Would you like to make that motion?
So, make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, great. Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, so it's unanimous. Thank you and welcome, Senator Kennedy. Maybe we'll see if our Representative Arciero is also out there.
I think he's working on getting online, so if you want to start with the Senator, and then when he gets on, he could join.
Well, let's do that. So, thank you, Senator Kennedy. I know in a previous meeting, we'd invited you and Representative Arciero to help us understand what's going on, what we can do to better engage with what's going on at state level related to COVID and all of the things. So we're really glad that you're here and look forward to any advice or insights that you have.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for inviting me to be here. Last night, I was in Grotten doing the same thing. So I really think that it's good to do this on an annual basis. I think it's good for the people at the State House, but I also think it's good for the Select Board as well. So hopefully, we can do this at least once a year. I'm happy to do it at any time. I think that, as everybody knows, probably the biggest thing out there has been the pandemic and recovering from the pandemic, and I think that's where all the focus has been. I'm sure that's where much of the focus has been in Westford, and that's how it is at the State House. The State House has been closed for the past 15 months. So, you know, most of it has just been Zoom meetings, but there has not been, I've not been to the State House for 15 months. The last time I was at the State House was March 11, 2020, which is quite some time ago. And actually, I miss it, and I think that government works better when it's in person than it does when it's virtual. So, but I think that, you know, as far as Westford has gone, I think that, you know, we've done pretty well. I think Representative Arciero and I have done pretty well in trying to bring some money in to help out in different areas. I know that when we did the transportation bond bill last year, we were able to get a local initiative of $2,085,000 for the Oak Hill Road improvements in Westford and another $100,000 in the economic development bond bill for economic development programming. Now, that, you know, that's all subject, those were in bond bills, and so they're all subject to the Governor's Capital Investment Plan, which generally comes out every spring, usually in June. So hopefully, those items and those projects will be in that plan, but if they aren't, there's always the plan next year that the, you know, and certainly Representative Arciero and myself would want to do everything we could to make sure that it wasn't. In this year's bucket, which is in conference right now, there is $50,000 on the Senate side as an initiative for Westford for school safety, which I think is for alums and for various other items to improve school safety in the schools. And I also think that Representative Arciero has an earmark on the House side for, I believe it's $125,000, but I'll wait and let him discuss that. So, you know, those are some of the things that we've been working on for Westford. You probably know what you're going to get for Chapter 70 and for local aid and also for the S.R. 3 allotment that will come to Westford. So I think for the S.R. 3, it'll be $651,100, which is a good amount of money. There was an increase of, in the Student Opportunity Act of $137,000, which isn't huge, but what we did with the Student Opportunity Act, you may recall that it was originally supposed to be a seven-year plan. We kind of lost a year, lost year. So now we've adjusted it so that it's now on a six-year plan. And then for local aid, there's an increase of about 3.5%, which is represented by $78,985. One thing that I think is good, because, you know, I've spent some time in local government as well, is that the House and the Senate Ways and Means Committee have been able to get together over the past two years and determine what the local aid and the Chapter 70 money will be beforehand, so that you're not waiting until, you know, into July to find out how much you're going to get, and it should allow all communities to be able to plan better. So with that, I'll just, I'll end and just open it up to questions.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you for your support. Any questions from the board or from you, Jody? Programs that are moving through? Yep, John?
Yeah, I understand that revenues are running ahead of what you predicted this year, based on the Boston Globe. And what would be the plan for that? Where's that revenue coming from, and is it like it's going to be steady for the future? Or is it just a pop-up increase?
Well, part of it, certainly the federal money is a pop-up increase, but it's a pretty good pop-up increase, I must say, and I think it's like that for just about everybody. However, you know, probably two years ago, when Ways and Means was planning out how the budget was going to look, the prediction was that this fiscal year would be kind of gloomy, but the next fiscal year, which will start next month, was going to be disastrous and because we wouldn't be getting revenues from last year, and so that would make the next fiscal year be even worse. But it hasn't turned out that way, and I think that's been to a lot of people's surprise. And so we are doing better than what we had predicted. But, and I think that's probably sustainable, but without that federal money, that wouldn't look like, it wouldn't look all that great. But I think, you know, combined with everything with the Student Opportunity Act and the federal money in the third round, along with the other two rounds, but certainly the third round was much larger for everybody than the first two rounds. You know, everybody's sitting pretty good, I think, for at least this year, and we just have to be prudent and thoughtful about the way we spend that money, because the federal money is just a, you know, that's a one-time hit.
Right here.
I know we've, in Western, we've been fortunate in teamwork with Acton and Drakeet and Lowell in applying for some mental health and wellness funding that's going to allow us to do some pilot work. Are you seeing anything, Senator Kennedy, in other communities, you know, thoughtful use of any of the one-time funds that are out there for experimentation that you think we in Westford should check in on or take note of?
If I do, I'll be happy to let you know. I haven't seen anything like that yet, but I think everybody is probably in the same position that Westford is, so that you're just planning on how you're going to spend the money. I think the school districts are kind of doing the, you know, the same type of thing, how are they going to spend the money that they've got that's additional? And, you know, I think good ideas should be passed around. So if I do hear anything that I think would be worthwhile and is a good idea, I'll be happy to pass it around to Westford and to every community in the district.
Great. Well, I know, we appreciate that. Any other questions for the Senator tonight? I don't know, Jody, if there's anything that we're tracking through the state that we want to make sure we've got tabs on, or if we feel like we've got a pretty good understanding? I know Don Yeoman Service pulling together all the details for the budget, so I don't know if there's anything that is left out there we need to ask about.
I think we're in pretty good shape. You know, we're complying with deadlines that are coming up now on different CARES Act funds, and then we will delve into the upcoming funds. So we're working on that, and once we're ready, we'll come to the Select Board and explain, you know, what our recommendations are. So I think we're in good shape, and I do communicate often with the Senator and our representatives. I will say our representative's having trouble getting on, so if he's not able to, and he comes on later, maybe you can defer to him then, but I'm not sure he's going to be able to join us right now.
But if I could, I have to say I have a lot of empathy for him. I had trouble myself. I maybe got a little bit early to start, but this is unique, this system. You know, I'm used to Zoom, and then at the State House, we use something called Teams, but this was, you know, for somebody that's not all that great as far as technology goes, this was challenging. So I feel good that he's having as much of a problem as I had getting on, so I'm sure he'll be, he'll work it out.
We will definitely welcome him with open arms when he's able to join us, and I spend a meaningful part of my day adapting all my computer settings to six different systems. Well, thank you, Senator Kennedy. Before we let Senator go, any last thoughts or questions? Yeah, John?
Yeah, Senator, there was an article in the Globe about a week ago about the $5.3 billion that the federal government is supposed to be sending our way. And is there anything that you need from the community as to what we need on that?
I think if there, you know, if you've got, if you have projects that would be special projects that maybe would be, maybe in some cases, almost a dream project, if you would send them to me, I'm not sure that we could be able to make sure that there's funding totally for them, but at least for a part of them. That's the only thing that comes to mind. I think it probably would be worthwhile doing that. You know, as you probably read in the Globe, the federal money, the legislature is taking control of the federal money and how it will be doled out instead of the administration. And so that's the only thing that I would suggest.
Okay, right here.
That's a great idea. I know the town has many, many thoughts and has been under a lot of stress with mental health and wellness, substance abuse, domestic abuse, and we will think on that a little bit and send our ideas your way.
I should say that there's, you know, there's quite a bit in this year's state budget regarding mental health. There's a good amount of money that's being spent. I myself have a bill in the legislature, too, for this session that would call for 100 caseworkers for the Department of Mental Health, and these would be for people who are at home but still need, you know, services of some kind, not presidential services or anything like that, but they still require services. And I've had constituents over the past couple of years who really feel like, who've had tragic consequences in their family, and they feel like maybe that wouldn't have happened if there had been somebody from the Department of Mental Health available to them. But, you know, they're short on manpower, so, you know, that's one bill. But there's a lot of other good bills, and there's a lot built into the budget for mental health. And if you would like, I think, you know, once the budget is finalized, probably Representative Arciero and myself could probably send you a summary of just what's entailed there.
That'd be terrific. That'd be terrific, and I know we'd appreciate that, and if we have other good ideas, we'll make sure we send them your way, so you know what we're looking for.
All right, well, thank you very much. It's good to see you all, even though it's...
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing you face to face soon. Thanks, Senator Kennedy.
Thank you.
Okay, we will proceed then and hope that Representative Arciero, I keep wanting to call him Jim, is able to join us, and when he is, we'll cut in. So next up would be our 740 item, which is the consent agenda. And let me go ahead and read through what we have here.
Excuse me, Tom.
Oh, there we go. There we go, it's on another screen. Good to see Representative Arciero. So far, we can't hear you. I don't know if you're on mute on your end. Eric, you can check.
Looks like he's muted. Jim, there's a toolbar with several circles, buttons. You have to hit the top one to turn it red to green.
You got it?
There we go. All right. Live in person.
Been one of those, my goodness, it's been a long year, hasn't it, guys?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I'm going to fill in some of the blanks that the Senator and I might have missed, et cetera. We've been a great team for Westford, certainly collaborate quite a bit on, you know, issues for the district, et cetera. And I know it's just been a very difficult last 15 months for everybody. I know for myself that I make statements all the time that we'll get out of this stronger and better, and they're all true, but I certainly think that the pandemic has done one thing, and it's really made us, it gave us pause to really get our arms around what's important, our families, our way of life, our health. It's been a, it's been quite a challenging time. You know, I wanted to first talk a little bit about the remote vote system. We adopted the remote voting about 14 months ago, and you have to think with 200, you know, state legislators, both in the House and the Senate, it's certainly like, you know, herding cats, and it's been quite a challenge to debate and to have discussion very oftentimes in the state budget of almost 1,200 amendments. So it certainly adds a lot of time on the municipal level, too. Everything you do in your deliberations is just a little bit difficult. But we've spent our last year, the Senator and I specifically, you know, assisting people through the pandemic, through navigating through unemployment, through small business loans, through dealing with our constituents. And a few things I'd like to report on the pandemic. Good news is that zero communities are in the high-risk red status category in our state right now. There is 3.8 million Massachusetts citizens who are fully vaccinated, and right now, it looks like 85% of the doses received from the federal government have been administered. And I know there's a concern with that in the last four to five months on how that was going to be. The seven-day testing average has fallen to 0.5%. The daily cases now are hovering around 100 a day with fewer than 200 patients in the hospitals. I think something that I worked with Senator Kennedy on quite a bit was getting the mass vaccination site in Lowell and as well as Devon's. The Lowell one is going to be shutting down soon, and Devon's is still open and still available for people in the Shoba Valley and Westford in this area, but it's certainly going to be something that we're going to start to see to recede as the pandemic starts to, starts to end. Also, I wanted to give a shout out a little bit to the Select Board for helping the citizens of Westford get through this tough time. I also know that Jeff Stevens was very helpful to my office, as well as the Westford Board of Health and the Upper Merrimack Valley Reserve Corps. They were instrumental in getting people, you know, initially tested, helping vaccination and mass vaccination sites in both areas. A couple of things I'd like to talk about that, I know that I've had conversations with the membership about, and certainly Jody, the state of emergency is going to be lifted in one week on June 15. Specifically, one provision of this bill would extend the ability of public bodies to meet through video conference that I had so much trouble getting through tonight. That is going to be part of a Senate bill that is being negotiated right now and going to be voted upon this week by the Senate, but that also is going to include a few other things. It'll allow the meetings, like I said, to go to April 1, 2022. Another provision will allow special permits for outdoor dining is going to go to April 1, 2022 as well. It would also allow and maintain early voting by mail for municipal and state elections through December 15. That's important to note. Also, to extend eviction protections, something I've been privy to lately is the Speaker of the House appointed me to be the Chairman of the House Committee, or the Joint Committee, if you will, for housing for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I'm going to be working on various issues with zoning, with affordable housing, with housing authorities across the Commonwealth, the eviction diversion program that we had in place to keep people housed during the pandemic. Those are all huge issues right now, certainly that, you know, really affects everyone in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. On the budget end, I always like to, for the edification of John, the new Select Board member, welcome, how the budget typically works. In January, the Governor files his version of the budget, and it's called House One. And in the House Ways and Means, the House Representatives comes out with their budget, typically around late March, and then we have our debate in April. So we have our version of the budget, then the Senate has their debate in May, and a conference committee is appointed by three House members and three Senate members, and then one final bill is put forward, you know, for an up and down vote for the conference committee. The budget is about $47.7 billion, and I'm happy to report that the revenues have been consistently running above expectations and above benchmark, which is a positive thing. And I think another positive thing is that there's going to be about $5.3 billion in federal COVID assistance monies coming through the American Rescue Plan, and we're very anxious to get our arms around how the guidelines are going to be put in place and how that's going to work. There was a sort of a tug-of-war or a push and pull, if you will, with the Governor initially, when the monies were coming through, the Governor wanted to, you know, latterly be able to appropriate that money, but the legislature kind of intervened on that, and we anticipate the guidelines for that money is coming through shortly, in the next couple of weeks or so, probably three weeks. Local aid, as you know, it's the lifeblood of our communities. We all rely on it. This year, Westfield received about $17 million in Chapter 70 funding and 2.3 in unrestricted general aid. This represents an increase combined of about $246,000, and the total local aid funding in this year's budget of $5.5 billion also reflects the fully funding the first year of the six-year implementation of the Student Opportunities Act. I think Senator Kennedy might have touched on that. Also, Senator Kennedy talked a little bit about an earmark. He was able to put forward on the Senate budget specific to school safety. We anticipate when the budget, when the conference committee comes out and the conferees agree on a final budget, that that will be part of that, and I believe that's $50,000. Moreover, Jody, I think we had a number of conversations about the Robinson School Playground, and I was able to get an earmark of $125,000 for that. I understand, I've had conversations with Emily Teller just recently about that, and that budget wouldn't be finalized until August, certainly way after town meeting. So I assume we can have conversations when that money is realized and work with CPC on how to appropriately fund that, and if there's a little bit larger of a number than we thought initially, we can probably scale that back if the money's realized, which we do feel like it will be. So I, that's all I really have at the moment. I talked a little bit about my role in housing, but it's been a tough time for everybody, I think, and things are getting better, and we're still been in an empty State House here, so. So I've had my housing committee meetings late this afternoon, and there's not a lot of people here yet, so we're not completely open to the public yet. But I anticipate, just like everywhere, it will be soon.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I know I have a couple of questions. I know there's at least one question from our audience. Any questions before we go there to, from the board members? Scott?
So Jim, congratulations on your football housing role. That's an area that we have refunded off and on, depending upon, I think, sometimes. What's, I know a housing authority is very frugally run, does not require, does not typically qualify for subsidy. But what is the budget situation for football housing? Is it going to be investments in that capital stock or sort of keep on prolonging the facilities as they are?
Well, that's a good question, Scott. Of the over 200 housing authorities throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, typically in five years, there's a housing bond bill. We anticipate this bond bill, which is, I think, the last bond bill about six years ago now, was over $2 billion. And that's specific for upkeep and improvements to public housing throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In our budget this particular year, the governor, we did about $9 million over the governor's budget initially on on public housing authorities throughout the, you know, throughout the Commonwealth. So we're moving in the right direction. Then I've had a number of conversations with David Haddison on some of the improvements and projects that he's been working on regionally. But overall, we're hearing an echo from a lot of legislators across the Commonwealth that are really learning to get their arms around investments in public and affordable housing throughout the Commonwealth. We're in a housing crisis. We're one of the most expensive places to live anywhere in the country. And in Boston, there's certainly conversations of eviction diversion. And that's, of course, everywhere in the Commonwealth. But rent control is an issue that tends to come up quite a bit in the, you know, in the more urban areas. And certainly, it's during COVID, that's been sort of exacerbated and debated even more so now. But in terms of investments in public authorities, we made a large investment, especially sort of during a tough economic time during the pandemic. So Scott, I anticipate bond bill, and I would, I would probably entertain that happening in the first year of the next legislative session. So I would, I would urge members of the community to look forward to that as a vehicle to make improvements.
Thanks. I just want to follow up. I know that in Biden's American Jobs Plan, he had a, he allocated a lot of money for football housing, actually. And I'm not sure where that stands with all the negotiations back and forth. Does he have a, a hand about that?
That number, Scott, is about $750 million out of the almost $5 billion I talked about this coming to the Commonwealth. And those guidelines are, right now, had a conversation, we had an oversight hearing with the Department of Housing Community Development. It was our first legislative hearing for the community on housing last week. And Secretary of Community anticipated that the guideline, how that money is going to be especially people staying in their homes that have suffered massive economic loss during the pandemic. So those guidelines, similar to the other guidelines, the federal guidelines with the money from the Recovery Act that's coming forward, I anticipate that will be in the future, hopefully two to three to less than that. I don't have the answer yet, and it's.
Thanks. Thanks both. Jody?
Yes. Hi, Jim.
Hi, Jody.
I'm sure you remember, over 10 years ago, the town applied for a grant to clean up 12 North Main, and we were awarded a $1.5 million bond. But then the election happened, and DeVal wasn't reelected, and we lost that money. So we have recently just put in another application for a little over a half million dollars on the One Stop for Growth. I don't know if you're aware of that grant for hazardous material cleanup through the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development. Anything you can do to help convince them that we are, you know, in important use for that, those funds. We, as you know, we're trying to sell that property. The cleanup of it is a stumbling block. So anything you could do to help us get some funding to get that over the, you know, finish line would be greatly appreciated.
Certainly, it is a priority of mine. It's the last mill in Westford to used to be huge neighborhood in Graniteville and Broadway Street. And the mixed-use capacity is something that's desirable, certainly everywhere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think in the last 10 years, you're correct, Jody, we, the legislature, able to get an earmark of about $1.5 million ago. And that expired. And we were able to, another bond bill. And how bond bills work, folks, as you know, they have to be released by the administration, so it's not a direct notification from the legislature. And what had happened is, not so, I would say, political forces were gubernatorial individual in office at the time, in the corner office. I think there was some conflicting plans on how things were going to be on the cleanup, if you recall. And I know the former assistant town manager and now town manager of Acton, our friend John Manjirati, did a great job on, you know, sort of getting his arms around that project and how we were going to move forward on improving things. But I think at the time, we had the Secretary of EOA down, we had the Secretary of DHCD down. We had a number of players, the Lieutenant Governor was in the district. It was something that I know, Jody, you advocated for. I did as well.
We've had a lot of people down there. What we need are funds. And actually, I think we think the cleanup costs are less now than what we thought back then. So anything you could do to help push that, you know, over the finish line would be greatly appreciated.
You've got something in the line of a grant, a Brownfields grant, around $60,000 or something around that point?
Yes, we do. We've already gotten that grant and other grants, but right now, we just applied for this one. So that would be really helpful to get this thing completed.
Certainly.
Good. Good. Yeah, we'll trust, trust in your help. It's exciting, your new role related to housing. I know we, we get a lot of questions from constituents about helping people who've raised their families here stay in town and providing good accessibility for people in town, so close to our hearts. So we'll just, let's keep an open mind to team up as best we can as these things, see things come down the pike. I do want to ask you the same question that we asked Senator Kennedy, which is, have you seen other communities do creative things during this time to access one-time funds for for exciting, you know, experiments or trials? Are there, are there things you draw our attention to that you've seen that maybe Westford should also take advantage of?
Well, fortunately, I do live in a community and do represent a district that has been certainly very forward-thinking on ways to partner with our state and federal partners. At this moment, I can't tell you a specific grant program. I can get back to you to do a little more exploring on things I think Westford should look into. I do know that, I do anticipate more monies coming through, you know, through the federal government, through almost $5 billion is going to be coming through and how those guidelines are going to happen. But we certainly will continue to work with Senator Kennedy to find any and all, you know, opportunities to make ends meet.
Good. Well, we'll stay close. Emily Teller, who you've already, already name checked, has a question for you. She asks, she asks, sort of clarification, is the early voting extension provision going to extend through December 15 of 2021 or 2022?
2021, to my understanding.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that. And I don't see any other questions from the audience, any other last questions, either from Jody or from the board? John? I think you're on mute, John.
Yeah, you mentioned extending, what, virtual meetings till April 1 of 2022? Any kind of constraints or guidelines associated with that that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, John. To my understanding, would be an extension of what the governor had already put forward. So it would be the same guidelines that they are currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Anita?
I just wanted to say thank you for, you know, giving us an update. I know that you and Senator Kennedy are very accessible and approachable. So I feel like that line of communication has always been open for you both. And so we just really appreciate that, and thank you for coming to speak with us.
I really. Let me just say one thing is, the Senator and I had a whole routine down, and I blew it because I couldn't get on because of technical difficulties. So, you know, we had to figure it out. So sorry, I got a little too ragged here, but.
All right. I think it worked perfectly. And next time, we'll all be together, you know, in person, I hope.
Look forward to that.
Great. Well, thank you, Jim. Have a great night. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Look forward to working with you again.
Okay, now we will move to the 740 consent agenda. And in a second, I'm going to read through these, and then I'll request a, or entertain a request to approve. So we have a banner request for the farmer's market. The applicant is the Roden Bush Community Center. Location will be at the J.B. Fletcher Library from June 15, 2021 through February 25, 2021. We have a winery license to sell at Farmer's Market. The applicant is Noel Powell of Aramapp Sellers. Location is on the Town Common, and this is through the duration of the Farmer's Market. We have a flag hoisting for India's Independence Day, a request to hoist the Indian flag. The applicant is Nureen. I need to get my glasses. Mousa Moussa and Jiranthi Jitaru, the Indian Association of Greater Boston. Location will be the temporary flagpole, and the date for that will be August 15, 2021. Do I have a request for a motion to approve? Or questions?
I have a question. Yeah, I just wanted to verify. So I see that the flag hoisting for India's Independence Day says Sunday, August 15 on our agenda, but in the, in the form itself had like a window, and it was like a TBD date. So I just wanted to make sure that if we vote, it's for the 15th then. So it's just clear on that.
Great. Maybe that's a question for you, Jody.
I know Nureen was out of town, so we did have some difficulty connecting. She did email me tonight. I don't know if she's on the meeting or not. Can you see if she's out there? I hear her.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if you could hear me. But thank you for having me this evening. And yes, I did get your question. In terms of the date, we are looking for the 14th Saturday. Is that okay?
I think that'll be okay. Any, any concerns about that, Jody, or any change we should make? Okay, so when we make the motion, we can make it amended to reflect the 14th for that request. John?
I noticed that the police hadn't signed off on this, on that application. Have they, since we received it, signed off on it?
Jody, I don't know if we've received any feedback from the police about that.
It's in your packet, I believe. They don't have any, any concerns at all. So I think just, Nureen, I know you had a lesson in how to hoist the flag from, I think, Jonathan Rivas during the week. That would be preferable because we don't have staff on on the weekend. So just make sure you have a refresher if you need it before the day of the event.
Absolutely. I will. And I will speak to the police chief, make sure any COVID-related, you know, requirements are met with and compliant with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nureen, for being here and answering questions. Any other questions before we entertain a motion? John?
Yeah, I have a question on that winery thing for the, let's see, for the sell at the farmer's market. They have an item in there where they give samples. Could somebody tell me how they do that? How are they going to orchestrate giving wine samples or something like that as far as this market? I mean, this is open market. It's out in the open, and it is alcohol.
Jody?
I don't know if Noel is out there. I don't know if you see him. They have sold for the past couple of years, John, at the farmer's market. I honestly have not seen them give samples. But I'm sure they're in compliance with Mass General Law. They have all their proper paperwork in order. And they are residents. They, they just need your permission to be on town property. But I don't have any other comment. I don't know if Noel's, Noel's out there or if Patty has any other comment.
Yeah, I don't have, yeah, I don't have any problem with the selling of it. The thing, I just was concerned about how you handle something like samples. I've been to wine probes and things like that where you have samples, and I just want to know how that works.
I'm sure they would have to ask for an ID before they were able to give a sample.
Yes.
But I am hearing Noel is out there. So if you want to.
Noel, welcome.
Yeah.
Hi, and this, yeah, this is Noel, Noel Powell. Yes, I mean, for wine samples at the farmer's market, by state regulation, we are allowed to pour up to five one-ounce samples to a customer if they desire. We do check IDs to make sure everybody is of legal age.
They have to imbibe the sample there at the booth?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they can't wander around with it. Okay.
No, no, it has to be done at the booth in our presence. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the verification, Noel. Great. Any other questions related to these items?
No.
Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Subject to public safety recommendations. Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? John?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
And I'm also an I, so it's unanimous. Next item is some information related to town meeting. Let's, the first item is just in the event of inclement weather on June 12, Delegate Chair Andrew Perrin-Sweet, along with Moderator Harkness, would have the authority, this is a motion that we're being asked for, I believe, Jody, to give them the authorization for the Select Board to author them, in the case of inclement weather on June 12, to have our chair and our moderator give them the authority to continue town meeting until the next day, June 13 at 9:00 a.m. And as such, please check our website's news and announcements for an update if the weather is questionable. Am I correct, Jody? Are we looking for a vote to authorize them that ability?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And any questions related to that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I saw a move.
Okay, thank you, John. A second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. That's also unanimous. Okay, our next position is to take a position on the Warren Article, number 21. This is the, this is the drive-through. I'll read it through. Amend zoning bylaw, Section 211, Establishment 53, Signs, Special Districts, General Definitions, Table of Principal Use Regulations, Appendix D, Table of Accessory Use Regulations to Define and Regulate the Restaurant Drive-Thru Facility. and appendix D, table of accessory use regulations to define and regulate the restaurant drive-through facilities. I know in your packet, there are a couple pieces of information that have arrived over the past couple of days. I don't know if Mike is out there, but I would like to invite Mike on behalf of the Sustainability Committee just to share what their findings were and what their vote was and answer any questions this board might have. Mike, do we see Mike out there? Do I see Mike? It looks like, Mike, you're unmuted.
Hi, Mike Berlinski, Chair of Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. Hi, Tom. Thanks. Yes, thank you. I did submit a letter last night after our committee meeting. We did have a discussion and did take a vote on the proposal in this town meeting article. We we did vote five to four not to support the proposal in the town meeting article. And as I summarized, primarily concerns around environmental impacts, both global greenhouse gas emissions and local negative health impacts. So I'll leave my summary there.
Yeah, thank you for your summary. That was, that was great to get that information. Let me just take a second to see if anyone in the committee has any questions about that, about your committee's vote or position. I think I think it was clearly articulated, so maybe not. I also just draw your attention to the, I think it's the Commission on Disabilities, that also submitted a letter today with their position, in that case detailing in support of this. I don't know if anyone representing that committee is here with us.
They got two of us.
Oh, okay, great. Whoever would like to be good to help in the committee.
Sorry, what you say?
I think Scott's deferring to you, but either one would be great to hear.
Sure. So there is a letter that's going to be uploaded to our packet if it's not there right now that where the commission four to zero voted in support of the article.
Okay, I'd be interested to see that. Maybe I saw an email. But yeah, it did a nice job articulating some of the concerns and giving some individual feedback from community members. So I think we have that on board, too. And Jody, maybe I'll ask you if there's other information or committee findings we were hoping to hear from before we have our discussion take a vote.
I know that the Economic Development Committee did vote in favor unanimously of supporting this article and the Council on Aging also voted in favor unanimously.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, with all those inputs and much gratitude for the hardworking committees in town Westford, let me see if anyone on the board has any additional questions or comments related to this article.
I don't.
Okay. Any anybody else in the in the audience or elsewhere have any comments or questions that they'd like to bring up at this point?
So, Tom, this is Bob Schaffer. I was prepared to give an update on what's happened as well as what's happened with the hearing process and the drive-through online survey, if you'd like.
Yeah, please do. Thank you. I did see that in my packet and I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you.
Okay, so I have delivered five documents. Hopefully, you've seen them. These five documents are in support of the drive-through restaurant overlay district. They include one of final results, summary briefing and report from the online survey that concluded last Friday. I've also provided you a copy of the information briefing from our final information forum that was held back on the 26th of May. I've also provided you the latest Article 21 motion language that was approved and approved last night's planning board meeting, along with a draft zoning map that shows the proposed drive-through restaurant overlay district. And the fifth file is a set of change notes because we made a lot of small changes, predominantly in response to comments from town council. I provided those change notes. I don't want to have to go through all those. But if any of you have any questions on the particulars of what has occurred in changing this since the 19th of May version, you could refer to that. But first regarding the survey, we closed the survey last Friday at 3:00 p.m. We ended up with 1,695 respondents. And I really want to thank all of our residents who took the time to record their preferences. And I really want to give a big shout out and acknowledge the excellent assistance I got from Mike Wells from Westford IT. Because it was without him, I couldn't have accomplished this. He provided all the help and support to set up this survey. We did periodic monitoring to make sure that the voting wasn't being tampered with or played with by people voting multiple times. And we took result collection samples periodically. And we observed some very consistent voting trends, which indicated that we didn't have constituencies trying to to rig it, rig it one way or the other. It was very consistent in how it occurred. As you can see in the survey results, approximately two-thirds of the respondents want drive-through restaurants and one-third do not. We also see that convenience probably was listed as the key advantage that is valued and the disadvantages of traffic and pollution are the important concerns for the disadvantages. The convenience requested primarily is for parents of small children, persons or caretakers for elderly or people with physical limitations. So if you have any questions on the survey at this time, I can discuss those before I proceed on.
Any questions related to survey? I found it very clearly represented.
Thank you. And I do want to acknowledge the assistance from Paul Fassbender. He kind of acted as my sounding board. We took the different positions and worked to make sure the language was as non-biased as possible so he could collect the advantages and disadvantages. So I just want to acknowledge that help. So secondly, at the Select Board meeting of 25th May, when I last met with you, there were some questions regarding average wait time and I think some confusion on the difference between average wait time and how that relates to statistics such as average orders per hour or queue length statistics. So in response to those questions, I did identify four scholarly papers on drive-through restaurant queuing models and analysis techniques. I took the web URLs for those four and those are listed in the information briefing that was presented at the 26th of May information forum. I did not provide copies of the papers for fear of copyright violations, but all four papers are able to readily be downloaded by any individual who wants to review that. So hopefully, if anybody has any questions about how you analyze a drive-through restaurant queue, all of the information is there in those four papers. So now regarding the motion language, the latest version is the 7th of June version, which was approved last night by the planning board, including a few changes from the version of Friday. And the planning board voted five to zero to support this article in motion last evening. So since we last spoke at the 25th of May, let me just go over a quick summary of the major types of changes that occurred. As I said, the major contribution to this was we received extensive town council comments back last Thursday and again, a few more yesterday. The bulk of the changes to the motion really were made in response to these comments. And for the most part, the changes I've made were to, in response to town council, were made to simplify and actually reduce the amount of content in the bylaw language. And predominantly, it was to reduce the duplicated process and controls language that could now be provided because we have defined this as a major commercial project and all of the controls and processes associated with an MCP site review process now apply. And as I said, I just remind you that we do define this as an MCP in this amendment now. In a few cases, there was also some changes made to modify the language for clarity or to eliminate ambiguity in the language. One of the things in the previous version was that the location of the drive-through restaurant overlay district was defined through bylaw language that was along the lines of all commercial highway parcels with frontage on Littleton Road will be defined to be in that overlay district. The change here now in this latest definition is to capture the definition of the district through the inclusion of a zoning, a draft zoning map, and you should have that in your packet. And this changes, all it accomplishes is to freeze the definition of the overlay district as it will be approved by town meeting if it gets approved and to not face any issues that might be associated with future A and Rs or other lotline change mechanisms. So this just makes it clear and causes freezes in perpetuity what the definition of the district is at the time of the vote at town meeting. A couple of the minor changes I just want to highlight here. One, we've added a requirement for outdoor speakers using an automatic volume control system with respect to the ambient sound levels. This is a piece of material I was able to borrow from a recently acquired draft of the upcoming Acton Drive Through bylaw. So that is in specifically reference in section 894 of the bylaw. That's number seven on the control list. Also, in response to, I think, discussion by Andrea Perinner-Sweet the last meeting, we've increased the interior seating requirements from 10 up to 24. And 24 was selected because that represents six booths of four seats each. So that's control number 10 in 8.9.4 of the bylaw. And then in section 895, we cleaned up the language, limiting the number of the special permits to six. And the language before could have been interpreted that once six permits had been reviewed and granted, that was it in perpetuity. The intent here is to account for six operational drive-through restaurants at any time. So the language now accounts for either permits that expire and are acted upon or restaurants that do implement a drive-through restaurant and cease operations in the future. So that language has been cleared up. And lastly, I do have one additional minor change in 895. And I'm going to have to take care of this on the floor of town meeting with a small amendment motion. And there are two occurrences of the phrase restaurants with drive-throughs. And to be consistent with the definition section, this should be changed to drive-through restaurants, very minor change. And the last thing I do want to highlight, it is listed in the change notes file, is we will not be amending Appendix B for the supplemental uses. That was not, that was deemed not to be necessary. So that's just a change from the language of the article. With that, I'm available for any questions you might have. Oh, I should say that the planning board did vote five to zero in support of the article and the motion.
Okay, I do see the comments from our audience, so I'll make sure to get to those. But let me just ask if anybody on the board has any questions about any of the language or other updates that Bob shared. Okay. Okay. I see that Barbara has a comment and Barbara, if we can, Eric, if we can make sure that Barbara is unmuted. If she has a comment she'd like to share.
Yes, hi, this is Barbara Terrio and I appreciate the board taking my comments. Basically, my comments are about a reality check and a reminder. First, the climate crisis is a global reality and we all know it. The reminder is that last fall, our town overwhelmingly voted for the Westford Climate Resolution to lower our carbon footprint. So we need to take actions today and all the tomorrows to curb these CO2 emissions if Westford is going to meet any of those goals of net zero carbon emissions by 2050. It's an ongoing task and I see it as unnecessary idling at drive-through restaurants will increase, not decrease, our carbon emissions. And with all due respect to the planning board that has included some well-intentioned provisions to curb idling in Article 21, most of us don't believe it's possible to mitigate those emissions unless you have extreme oversight and enforcement. So no matter how you look at it, there's still only one bottom line and that is that internal combustion engine vehicles, which currently make up the majority of our cars and trucks today that are driving and idling in a drive-through restaurant line, will emit CO2 and that ultimately affects our carbon footprint. So I see Article 21 as a backward step for Westford and that we really need to do the right thing for our children, our grandchildren, to have a healthy planet. Thank you very much. That was my commentary.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Chauncey Chu points out that the ZBAA did not support the amendment. I don't know if anyone has any comment about the specific vote the ZBAA took or what their count was. We can come back to that if anyone has any detail or further question about that. I see a comment from Carol Morse and Carol repeats many of the comments that Barbara made. I'll read it out loud. Last October, the town voted to create a committee and a plan to reach net zero by 2050. This is contrary to laudable motion for the sake, this meaning this motion, I believe, this this warrant article, is contrary to that laudable motion for the sake of convenience of profit. I think I saw. Emily, I see you. Emily, if, why don't you go ahead if you've got a comment you'd like to share? And then Paul, I see your comment also. We'll make sure to get to you. Emily?
Thank you. It took me a while to unmute. I wanted to say that I am a member of Westford Climate Action, which brought the resolution to town meeting, which was overwhelmingly supported to do what Barbara Terrio just commented about, reducing our carbon output in our town all the time and with every board and committee. And I totally resonate with every word Barbara said. But I also would like to point out that town meeting has disapproved allowing drive-throughs three or four times. I am very disappointed, I guess, that one of our town boards is bringing this again. I think the the perspective is for economic gain and I really am disappointed that that seems to be taking precedence over health in many ways. I think we have curbside already. I think that may be extended. I think that serves the need. I don't know if people turn their cars off at curbside, but I think at the schools and other places around town, we do need to enforce the state's law that there is no idling allowed. And I just, you know, I hope the town meeting votes this down because the people who go to town meeting really care about this town. Not that the people who took the survey that Bob and the planning board and the Economic Development Committee put out don't care. But that's how our democracy works. Town meeting passes this and town meeting has already said several times, we do not want drive-throughs in Westford. So I'll see you all bright and early Saturday morning. I appreciate your listening to what other people are saying besides the data that is being brought. And thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, Emily. And as you point out, town meeting will have a chance to speak on this on the weekend, on Saturday. Paul, did you have a comment you wanted to share? I see you've got a note here, maybe some clarification regarding survey point? I don't know if we're able to get Paul Fassbender unmuted. Okay, well.
It says I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Paul.
Okay, good. My concern in this, and I'm personally, you've read my information packet, so I won't repeat it here, is that assuming this type of bylaw does pass, just for argument's sake, my question is, are we trying to take too big a step with this? This bylaw asks us to go from a total prohibition of drive-throughs to a model that really, according to industry sources, because it has an ordering kiosk, fits the model of what they call a quick service restaurant, which is basically a restaurant like McDonald's or one of the fast food restaurants. Obviously, McDonald's would benefit from this, but most of the other 35 or so restaurants that we. that we have in town now really would not, along with friends, because they operate in a different model. As an example, Eviditions, Five Guys, and Chipotle, their corporate offices are putting together plans for drive-throughs, but they're using pickup windows only because their model is to have food that's basically crafted individually and timed so that it is ready for best service at the time the customer shows up. And I found some stuff online that the Five Guys folks have some interesting software that takes advantage of understanding the location of people as they're driving up to the store and are able to help time their cooking process, so that it literally comes off the grill in time so that they can deliver it out to the cars and so forth. So one question is, by adopting this, even though, as Bob says, those restaurants could implement that model, chances are, many of the slots will end up going to new entrants to Westford, who were the familiar quick service restaurants, and it will create more competition for those folks. And part of this is based on some of the survey results. Interesting, I spent some time looking through the comments that people typed in on questions three, six, and nine, and there were some different perspectives than I had last week at this time. As Bob pointed out in his presentation, the big things that people were concerned about with drive-throughs are traffic and litter, and specifically, traffic during peak times. In other words, not average times, such as is referenced in the bylaw, but what happens when the queue's overflow? And a number of people in their responses mentioned specifically the Dunkin' Donuts in Chelmsford. And I had the opportunity of actually driving by there on Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, and I was, the lane was stalled going westbound, and it turns out that there were several cars on 110 with their wipers on trying to turn into Dunkin' Donuts, but the queue was full right up to the street. And people were eventually getting smart and passing them on right in order to get through. In fact, during the previous meetings, other people have brought up examples of McDonald's and Maynard's and another Dunkin' Donuts and Fitchcave and so forth. So one unanswered question here that's really in the category of it's an anticipated consequence, not the unanticipated consequences we worry about so much, is what happens when the queue overflows on these sites?
Right.
Is that something?
Well, no, just Paul, I understood your comment. Those all sound like.
Oh, okay. Also, from the meeting discussion we had last night, we were basically told the town can't penalize restaurants for litter generated by its customers and so forth. So one question for the board is, can the town do anything about that? Or is litter generated from sites like this something that we just have to live with if we permit them? A third area that came up from the, the survey that I really hadn't thought of a whole lot is, a lot of people talked about wanting to be loyal to the 35 or so restaurants that we currently have in town.
On 110.
And in fact, many people were specific and basically voted for, we would like to see these spots go to McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks and stuff like that. Obviously, we can't do, do something like that selectively. But one of the questions is, a lot, you know, in addition to adopting the model that favors those restaurants, a concern was that many of the restaurants that are currently there, including franchisees, may not have the financial resources to consider adding a window or moving locations. So one question that I think is still unanswered is, how many of the current restaurants along 110 have approached and asked, is this bylaw change good for you or bad for you? If it goes through, will you be in line to, to take advantage of it? So in other words, is it something that our current businesses really are, are pressing for, or is it just something the developers are, are interested in?
So Paul, there's a lot, Paul, there's a lot there. I'm not going to be able to keep track of it if we don't stop and address those. So it sounded like the first block.
If I could address a couple of comments from the planning.
Actually, Bob, if you could just hold on a sec. So I think, and Paul, maybe if you could go unmute, we're getting some feedback. Okay. So a couple of the things that I heard there are really comments that might be appropriate for Town Meeting to consider. So I don't think there was a question exactly. It was, it was, are there unexpected consequences here? I think that's a question for everyone to think about. I think I did hear a couple of questions for the, for the board, maybe. One was maybe a question for Jeff Moore, said if he's, if he's available around, you asked, what can the select board do to, to monitor litter or put additional controls on litter? So let me, let me park that and see if Jeff's available and can answer that. And then there was a, there was a fact question about whether the different businesses had been consulted about whether or not this benefited them or didn't benefit them. Maybe that's a question that we'll go to Bob with. So, so first, let's ask Jeff that question about what options does the select board or other town entities have to monitor, control, restrict litter? And then Bob, I'll ask you just to respond to the fact question about.
Actually, on that one, I can respond on the way the planning board did.
Bob, can you, can you please hold off? Let's go ahead and go to Jeff first.
Thank you. So if this bylaw were to pass this amendment, the planning board would be the special permit granting authority. They could impose numerous conditions of approval as part of any affirmative decision, one of which could include a trash monitoring program. I know Mr. Schaffer also has done some research. Some restaurants have even been required to apply the restaurant's labels onto, onto litter so you can identify the source. There are some problems with that, too. For instance, now you're only, you may only be requiring and tracking that of restaurants with drive-throughs as opposed to all the other litter in town. I mean, maybe it's also a way to say it's not them, but there are some things that can be done for monitoring and checking, depending on how it's set up and approved. It could be very labor intensive to check, but there are certainly things that can be done and incorporated as conditions of approval.
Thank you, Jeff. And Bob, can you just respond just to the fact question about whether other businesses were consulted about whether this bylaw change would benefit them or not?
We did consult other businesses, and Bruce Rosenberg, Ron Catterino, and Tom Barry went out and did that. We didn't go out specifically about restaurants. We did go to the Wilder Corporation and to Cornerstone. And in both cases, they talked about the overall improvement to the business climate that they thought this would bring in terms of that halo effect. And in the case of Cornerstone, they acknowledged that they didn't think any of their properties really could support this kind of a drive-through. And the other part of that I just want to acknowledge is, we were not trying to favor the model for a McDonald's. What's really, the reason why those controls are in there is those are the most onerous facets of, of drive-through restaurant operations, that we wanted to have adequate controls. And we were doing that in response to the criticisms and concerns that were raised at Town Meeting. So that's why we talk about an ordering kiosk. I'm very familiar with the Five Guys model. I use it all the time, and I, I like it. But that's not a model that we had to control. It's the other one.
Okay, thanks, Bob. I see, I see one other question in the queue. I think this will be our last question. I think Chauncey has a question about the process. So if we could unmute Chauncey.
Okay, thank you, Chair. I have a, a question for the board here on this process. There's been a number of revisions to the amendment over the past several weeks here. And even tonight, we have maybe two or three amendments proposed by Mr. Schaffer. I'm asking the board whether this is fair to the general public in that they do not have a complete final version that they expected to vote on on only three days. This, this three days doesn't allow people in a public forum to ask any questions or make any comments about the changes. Granted, they may be minor, but they may be major to some individuals in town, and they have no opportunity to discuss their concerns, given that there's only three days left. And to bring these things up at the, the last minute, and even on the floor of the town meeting, doesn't really give justice to the amendment either way, pro or con, without some consideration, some thoughtful discussion. And I just think that, I just questioned and asked the board whether they think this is adequate time to make a, an informed decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Chauncey. And, and I guess my comment there would be that, that is certainly a factor people can consider when they vote on Saturday, but the process does allow changes to occur in this way. And I'll invite any of the board members to comment on that when we have a chance to enter discussion. I did see, I said it was going to be the last one. Let me see. Just quick, I know Paul put it, Paul Fosbender put an additional question in here. Okay, he asked, is the severability text discussed in last night's planning board meeting included in the new bylaw language? If so, please read it and explain it. Bob, you might be in a position to understand that question and respond to it.
Yeah, or Jeff can, because we got, we, it's, it's actually already in the bylaw. I believe it's section 1.7. You can look in the Westford zoning bylaw, and severability applies to all existing bylaws or new bylaw amendments.
Jeff, any comment to that? Or did Bob nail it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. With that, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your questions and for the discussion. Now we'll turn to the board for any comments or discussion before we move to recommend or not recommend. Any, any comments from the board related to this? Anita?
Yeah, you know, thank you for, for everyone and all the effort that's been put into this. I know it's been a lot of work. And I just have a couple of things. There have been a lot of communications that have come in over the past few weeks, and I don't think they've all been included in tonight's packet, but maybe we can upload retroactively, if that's okay, if that's possible. But there was an email that came in several weeks ago from one of the members of the Clean Action, Clean Energy Committee that was looking at the CO2, right, for driving gasoline-powered vehicle versus idling at a drive-through. And it was 0.4 kilograms of, of carbon dioxide per mile driven versus 0.3 kilograms of carbon dioxide to visit a drive-through restaurant for idling at a drive-through. And so there are other, other, I guess, counterarguments to some of the, some of the things that we've heard today. And I, I know we've heard a lot about the, the businesses benefiting from drive-throughs and whether or not it's really just feeding into corporations and kind of like those big, like money-mongering corporations. But I think a lot about the, the customers, right, the community that's supporting this, those people with disabilities, it's families with young children, it's family members who are caregivers for people with disabilities. And I'm going to continue to support drive-throughs because we have it already for banks and pharmacies, and I would support it for restaurants as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Other, Scott?
Yes, first, the Chauncey's comments, and I, I agree. I mean, I tend to agree that we want information to the public as it can be. However, we, we asked the planning board to go out and do more hearings, have more surveys, and we can't then fault that very same board for incorporating comments into their, into their articles. So I think that that's, it's true, but it's a tad unfair. And we've been things in town for, for a time, and it's not ideal, but it is part of the process. And I think in this case, the process is served by making a better article by making the changes as opposed to trying to, you know, do them later. You know, as for, it is comments, I agree. I mean, this is, you know, sort of trade-off, well, of our first few comments between the environments, it's called convenience, but it's not convenience if you're wheelchair-bound and, or have a small child, and it's, it's a decision of, do I drive to Chelmsford to get, to take out, idle there, or do I idle Westford, not drive to Chelmsford? But I do, okay, what's the evolution of the automobile? It is moving toward, you know, cars that turn themselves off when they're stopped, turn themselves back on again when they start. You know, we're looking at EV fleet. So the emissions will get better with time. However, disabilities don't get better with time. In fact, the population is aging. We're going to have more individuals needing services, not less, as we all get, get older. So if I put that sort of equation in my head, I have to come down and say that the drive-throughs, to me, the server, the need is not being met, and, and I think the cost to that need environmentally will be, when it's mitigated with time. And not that.
Thank you, Scott. Paul?
Yeah, I agree with Chauncey's concerns, but I think they can be overcome by explaining this well at the annual town meeting. I've always had concerns about getting the right information and total information to the town meeting because they have a tough decision to make. And as far as the drive-through thing is, I think the select board has done a pretty good job of setting up some standards, and I would be in favor of this.
Yeah, my, my own feeling is that I'm, I want to listen to, to vulnerable members of the community who rely on drive-through access. And, you know, I'm, I, I know this is, I hate to look at this as a balancing act if, if there's any chance that we're having a negative impact on the climate, but I'm also sensitive to those who are community members here who will, who need the service of a drive-through, or any drive to wherever that is, and I know that has a negative climate impact as well. So I will, I will be supporting this as well. Okay. If, unless there's any other comments or questions from the board, I will entertain a motion to either support or not support. Anita?
I just wanted to make sure that there, there was a comment in the list, Tom, that I think it wasn't read out loud yet, from Carol Morse.
From Carol Morse?
Yeah.
If it's still, okay, I did read one from Carol, but if there's another one, please go ahead, Anita. I may have missed it.
Okay, she said it wasn't read yet, or so we might have missed it. Westford Climate Action has unanimously, unanimously voted to oppose drive-through restaurants.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, with that, we can entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we recommend.
Okay, we need a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Roll call. Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I might as well, so it's unanimous. Thank you all very much for your hard work on this important and many-layered issue. We'll move to our 8:05 topic, which is old new business. First is a request from the Dog Park Task Force to appoint Cheryl McGrath and Amy Verro as full members for terms expiring on June 30th, 2022. Recommendations coming from Lauren Coffey. I will entertain a motion.
I'm supporting.
I'm sorry. Thank you, John. I thought I heard you say it. I thought I heard your second already. Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott? I think I saw your eye. Thank you, and I'm an eye as well. So that is unanimous. I see a request to appoint election officers for terms to expire on July 31st, 2022. Joe, do we need any more exposition? Jody, do we need any more exposition, or we can just go ahead and make a motion on that? We can go ahead and make a motion? Okay. Go ahead, John?
I have a question on that, about how this really works. Is this timely? I was looking for some backup information I hear as far as the Mass General Law concerning that, where we have the Democrats come across, and they provide the same information? They, you know, I thought we appointed election officers for the specific precincts at some place in time. And when I was looking at the Mass General Law, one of the things that stood out, it talks about the Selectman Area Councilor landing not earlier than July 15th and or later than August 15th, appoint election officers for each voting place of precinct. And so that made me question whether or not this is, is the time for it. And I, have we done this before? Please, I haven't been in it, one of the meetings, but have we done this general election officer voting before, where it's to list the Republicans, list of the Democrats, list of the unenrolled, that sort of thing?
Maybe it's a question for Jody or for Patty?
I will. Oh, thank you, Patty. Hello. Okay, as far as this goes, every year at this time, a letter is supposed to go to the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee, and it is asked of them to come forward with any folks who would like to be election officers. This has happened, and most times, quite frankly, I don't hear anything. Typically, for the term of the election officers ends July 31st, it's a different, a whole different expiration than most things, and they're appointed for one year. Typically, I send out letters or a questionnaire or whatever, do you want to be reappointed, somewhat like what Maryland does with the boards and committees? And they say yes or no. And they're reappointed by the local licensing authority, and which is you, and off we go. Okay, I was back on alcohol, forget that, you're the board. But this time Kathy Lynch is the new chair, and she has expressed some concerns that perhaps there weren't enough Republicans being, working at the polls. So she actually did a lot of legwork and produced these names, so I am putting them forward for their appointment. Did anybody understand that convoluted explanation I just gave?
I think I did, and it just reinforced my, reinforced my concern. Because I was looking at the Mass General Law, and it said, not earlier than July 15th or later than August 15th, the select board will appoint election officers for each voting place or precinct. And, you know, that's a nomination from the Republican Committee. And I thought that based on what I read in the Mass General Law, that we're early. And, you know, normally we, when we do it, you look at the precincts, and they're the unenrolled. Who sends the list in for the unenrolled? Are those just the existing ones? How many people do we have that are already election officers that are going, as we used to call them military, re-up for the next voting cycle? And based on what I was reading there, that appointing them as election officers right now without the total thing in hand and before July 15th, I don't know, if I'm reading it correctly, we shouldn't be doing that so early. That's just my opinion. I, a lawyer could probably run me off of that, but that's just a question I have about appointing election officers, this group, right now.
Do we need to do this in this meeting tonight? Just for timing reasons?
Are you asking me?
I guess so, Patty. I want to make sure we don't disrupt the hard work of other people here, but if John has a question, that we'll need someone beyond my experience to opine.
Well, John's question, John's question is, is well asked. This would be for a term beginning July 1st of 2021 and go until 2022. Yes, the Republicans were very proactive in wanting to get people, and I appreciate that because I'm always looking for election workers. Typically, because the registered Democrats in town are probably two to one to the Republicans, it always appears that perhaps more Democrats are working at the polls than Republicans. And I think that was Kathy's concern, that she wanted to make it a more well rounded, which we try very hard to do. Quite frankly, most people are unenrolled in a party, and as John had mentioned, there are views next to their name for being unenrolled. And we just do the best we can with what we have.
Yeah.
So I think John's question is, John, I think your question, if the question is, are we in compliance with Mass General Law?
Yeah, and my view is that we're not.
Okay, so that's the question, I guess we want, either Patty, you could assert that we are and that we're in good practice, or we could decide that we want to get a lawyer's opinion and come back to this in our next meeting. I think those are the two options, so.
Or wait, wait till after July 15th. I just want to make sure we have it all in here, because my experience has been, I've been an election officer and to a couple of precincts, and you come out with a list of who's on the precinct, and you appoint those officers as, you know, who's, who's in charge of it, the closures, I've got closure. So we usually appoint them by this, by precinct, and it, it shows the relationship, whether Republican, Democrat, or unenrolled.
Right.
I think appointing these as election officers in this one slug here, where are they going to go? Are they going to super, are they going to replace somebody that's already an election officer? And it's, and it's before July 15th, which if I read the law correctly, we shouldn't be doing it this early. And that's.
Yeah, I understand, John. So if, if, I mean, John has a concern that, that we're not following Mass General Law, I don't want to go ahead and take a vote if, if there's that concern unless there's some enormous time urgency here. So I guess, Jody, let me just ask your reaction. I guess what I would do is, is just make sure that John has a chance to ask his question if we get an opinion to make sure we're, if he's questioning whether we're in compliance with the law, I guess I'd like to get that opinion before we vote. As long as we do that by our next meeting, does that still give us, give us the time we need?
I think so, because we don't have an election ahead. Patty, I've been, I'm looking at the law right now, but it's, you know, long, so do you have an issue if we wait till June 22nd and get his, his question answered, Patty? I have no issue with it at all, but I just want to clarify for John that we do this every year. Usually, you're right, we do it more in July and August. And I always, what we do, John, is I give a list of a whole ton of names. If you look at the, the selectmen's minutes from past years, you'll see that they're all nominated at once, and periodically, other people want to become election officers, and they're appointed. What you do for me, when you were a closer, I create those lists for the different precincts. I put them together. And typically, everybody's in the same precinct, they always are. I have a lot of the so-called quote unquote regulars, which would be the wardens and the clerks who run that particular precinct. And then we fill in, and yes, most times it's a lot of the same folks, but we have new people who have expressed interest, and we try and fill those in as well. We had some people come and help out last year, particularly where it was quite difficult with the pandemic, and I've got a whole new crop of people, and it's great to have this many people. And this is probably a good time to mention that we're probably, in fact, I know we're going to have another precinct this year, so I have to get more election officers going and educated on how to do it. But I don't, to answer your question, I don't have any problem waiting.
Okay, that was a good, long answer to your first question. So we're going to go ahead and post, we're going to put, thank you for the answer. So we're going to postpone that till next time. Next item on the topic is request to approve the 2021 annual reappointments for committee and board members, as listed in the meeting packet. Jody?
I had one edit on the, the last page of the appointments under Zoning Board of Appeals. It's actually five year terms, so I'd like to change Scott McKay and Scott Fitzgerald alternate to terms expiring June 30th, 26.
Okay, so thank, we will, when we make that motion, we'll need to add that amendment.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for that list?
None.
Okay, a motion, motion for approval with Jody's amendment.
I make the motion we approve as amended.
Second.
Great, thank you. Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Any board reports or updates? Okay, seeing none. We have minutes for approval and release, regular session from April 13th and April 27th. Any questions or comments, excuse me, about the minutes? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Excellent, second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, John.
Even though I wasn't there.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And would John, just a point of clarity, would John abstain? No, he can, great.
He can don't, that's fine.
I like to look, I like to look, I like, I read them, and I liked them, so I like to look at them, so.
Good, excellent. I'm also an aye, so that also passed unanimously. And Jody, to you for town manager's report.
Thank you. So I, I just wanted to update you, I've sent some messages out to the board, and just a public reminder that all public meetings, public board meetings duty to be held in person beginning June 15th. And we'll keep people posted if that changes, but everybody should plan accordingly and post accordingly. The second thing I wanted to bring up is I did do a state of the town. It was emailed to the select board, it is in your packet, it is online, I'm not going to give it at town meeting, but it's filled with a lot of information, and so I encourage people to check the link on the agenda or just go on the town website. And next, I'm going to request that you approve and sign, not tonight, obviously, but come in and sign the bond anticipation notes for the following projects. Oak Hill, Plain Road, and Moore Road, infrastructure improvements in the amount of $4 million. Town Farm Road Water Tank in the amount of $1.2 million. Westford Academy Amenities Building in the amount of $1 million. Kersey Circle Water Mains in the amount of $500,000, and roadway improvements in the amount of $500,000. I'd like you to take one vote on all that, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the bond authorizations.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you, John. On favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm, I'm an aye as well.
Thank you. So that paperwork is in the town hall, if you can stop by and sign that soon, that would be great. Thank you.
Anita, did I see a question?
Yeah, or I just wanted to point out that there was a question in the chat, though it had to do with the June 15th expiration date about using virtual meetings. And so Mike Berlinski asked if our state reps had any updates to share on the extension, which I know they did. I don't know.
There's legislation filed, but at this point, it has not been approved. So at this point, as of June 15th, they need to be in person. I will alert everyone if that changes. Okay, so then moving on, we have a request from pedestrian safety to utilize 2,700 from Selectman Board, or I'm sorry, Select Board Community Initiatives, which is basically your 21 budget amount you have still in the account. And with that, along with some police department funds that they're willing to kick in, we purchased two solar powered radar speed signs to be installed on town roads. So this money probably would have been used for our strategic planning retreat, but we didn't have it this year, so if you're willing to support this initiative, then we will get those purchased.
Scott?
Yeah, so as a member of pedestrian safety, we've had increasing concerns about traffic, traffic speeds, and therefore implications for pedestrian and bike safety. So this is a pretty well proven traffic calming measure with solar powered ones that can stay up longer. And it seems a pretty small investment for what can be a pretty effective means of controlling speeds and safety.
Thank you, Scott. Any?
I might add.
If I might add, thanks to, to Patrick Bouchon, I fit the rank wrong, I'm sorry, a lot of research that he did into this, you know, on our behalf. So the police department's been great in terms of listening to our needs, responding to those needs, and researching the best bang for the buck for these, these detectors.
Jody, and then I see one question from the public that we'll make sure we get to. Go, Jody.
Yeah, so Chris Barrett has also been very instrumental in helping to organize this, so I wanted to give him credit. And I just wanted to mention to the board, you have, you have purchased three of these in the past with any leftover funding you had at the end of the year. One got stolen, we never retrieved it, but the other two, we still have, so.
Edith asks where these will be installed, if we've already made that decision.
I don't believe that I have that information.
John?
I expect they'd be installed at random locations at different times, and it looks to me like these have a real time reporting capability on, so it might even help the police decide, you know, figure out where something's going wrong.
Yeah, Scott, you may have direct knowledge of this.
Yeah, John, I'm on both counts, that they are meant to be moved about, so as we have residents, you know, on a certain road complain about speeds, we can put these up, and they do track, you know, number of vehicles and the speeds they're at, you can, you can then derive the average speed, which is, you know, sort of informative to the police department to know where we have issues of, you know, high average speeds, they can deploy their resources accordingly to remedy that in the usual manner with tickets.
That may raise another question, but.
Okay. Got a lot of questions tonight, which is great. Let me, let me quick, unless Anita, unless you, you can pull it up faster than I can.
Yeah, I, well, I see the one from Emily Teller, do you want me to read that one?
If you don't mind, that'd be great.
Yep. I'm getting better at this thing, okay. Says the Pedestrian Safety Committee has conferred with members of the Westford Police Department as well as Westford Department of Public Works about the feasibility of purchasing and deploying two radar speed control signs on Griffin Road. While the Westford Police Department currently has two such signs, those are usually deployed on a short term rotational basis along various roadways in town. The intent behind, sorry, the intent behind acquiring two more is to deploy them longer term on troubled spots such as Griffin Road. These signs can store traffic data, which will be used to evaluate the long term effectiveness of speed signs. Westford Department of Public Works has offered to install the signs.
Okay, fantastic. Unless there's any other questions, we can entertain a motion. The motion would be to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scott.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the signs using select board funds.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, John. All in favor, John?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye.
Thank you. I'm wondering if Emily wants a job. It's a great job, Emily, and summarizing.
Emily's getting a lot of coverage in this meeting. Okay, I think, Jody, are you going on vacation? Is that what I'm seeing there?
Yes, yep, my son's getting married, so I'm asking you to appoint Eric Hydeman, acting town manager. manager, beginning Thursday, June 17th through Friday, June 25th.
Do I have a motion to?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you, John. Second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Anita. All in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I'm also an eye. Uh, Bruce, I see, I'm sorry, I see Bruce has got his hand up. Bruce, uh, if you've got a quick comment or question, we can certainly entertain it. While we're working on that, Jody, we can go ahead and do the, the next item.
Okay. And lastly, I have contracts and purchase orders. Contracts are with the Mass Department of Public Health, Office of Local and Regional Health for a grant awarded to, to, from the Public Health Excellence Grant Program in the amount of $345,182.53. I have a contract with volunteer firemen's insurance for injured on duty, 111F coverage for public safety personnel in the amount of $57,426. And purchase orders, AAA laser for printer toner in the amount of $25,000, CDW government for VMware, VMware sup, uh, sorry, VMware support in the amount of $17,623.36, and CDW government for SOPOS antivirus in the amount of $13,021.74.
Okay. Any questions for Jody? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the contracts as presented by the town manager.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Anita. Uh, all in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm also an eye.
Thank you.
Uh, it looks like Bruce's hand went down. So Bruce, if you, uh, if you had a comment, please send it along. I see that we have correspondence next on our agenda. Any questions about correspondence that we should discuss?
Question to wave, we're doing the correspondence.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, John. Um, all in favor, John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
I'm also an eye, and that brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll, we'll vote by a wave of hands. All in favor? Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Westford. Please, please join us, uh, Saturday morning at nine o'clock. Uh, I think Jody mentioned we'd like to get you there if you could by 8:30 so we can have an orderly, positive, pleasant experience of town meeting. Uh, thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you for the excellent dialogue. We appreciate it. Have a great night and stay safe and be well.
Good night, everyone.
Yep. Good night, everyone. Thanks.